Good afternoon, everyone. We'd like to get started if you could come in and please find a seat. Thank you all for coming. If you would also please rise as the dignitaries are escorted into the hall and to the stage and to remain standing for the presentation of colors, the Pledge of Allegiance, and the National Anthem.
Detail. Attention. Detail. Forward. Mark. Detail. To the left. Right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, hooves broad stripes and bright stars through a perilous fight? All the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rockets' glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, Saint Zed's star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave!
can you hear me okay? I'd like to call upon Reverend Richards of Trinity Church to give the invocation.
Our dear friends and neighbors, we gather today, and as we do so, we gather in the shadows, the gracious shadows, of all those who have come before us, in the presence of our forefathers and mothers, whose quest for liberty brought them to a new land and whose commitment to the ideals of freedom gave birth to a new nation. We are the inheritors of the fruits of their labor, and as such are called ourselves to the work of freedom's preservation and promulgation. We gather today, on a day when we mark the passing of George Herbert Walker Bush, 41st President of the United States, and we give thanks for his gracious service to our country. We remember today and pray for his family and friends and for our country who mourn his passing. We gather today as sons and daughters of the dreamers, the adventurers, the brave, the clever, and all the visionary men and women who have gone before us. Let us now, in their presence and in their honor, pray God's blessing upon our country and upon this gathering. Almighty God, who hast given us this good land for our heritage, we humbly beseech thee that we may always prove ourselves a people mindful of thy favor and glad to do thy will. Bless our land with honorable industry, sound learning, and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord, and confusion, from pride and arrogance, and from every evil way. Defend our liberties and fashion into one united people the multitudes brought hither out of many kindreds and tongues, and do with the spirit of wisdom those to whom in thy name we entrust the authority of government, that there may be justice and peace at home and among the nations of the earth. In the time of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in the day of trouble, suffer not our trust in thee to fail. Almighty and ever-living God, source of all wisdom and understanding, be present with those gathered here today. Guide us all to perceive what is right and grant us both the courage to pursue it and the grace to accomplish it. Amen.
Amen.
Detail. To the right. Right. To the front. Mark.
At this time, I'd like to introduce the Honorable Colleen M. Hastings, to administer the oath of office, first to the school committee.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly... repeat after me. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution...
That I will support the Constitution.
...of the United States of America...
Of the United States of America.
...and of the State of Rhode Island...
And of the State of Rhode Island.
...and Providence Plantations...
Providence Plantations.
...and I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...the duties as a member of the Newport School Committee.
The duties as a member of Newport School Committee.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming, and I'd like to thank the voters of Newport once again for showing support and confidence in re-electing me to the school committee. I'd like to also thank my colleagues on the school committee-elect for placing their belief in me to lead them in the coming years. Thanks also must go out to my family and friends that worked so hard and supported me to be here today. I couldn't be as committed to serving in this capacity without much sacrifice and support of my family, especially my wife Bridgette and my children that are here today, Patrick, Molly, and Jack, and Maggie and Maeve that couldn't be here but always were very supportive through my campaign. They always seemed to be able to get me calibrated on those days when I seemed to be spinning without direction, so I appreciate that. As a school committee, we'll have many issues to deal with during our term together on the school committee as a team, many known and many that we don't know today. The constant during this time, though, will be that our children are accomplishing great things in our schools every day, thanks to the very dedicated and non-relenting staff that push our children to be successful in their lives today and in the years to come. These are our kids and our future, and we need to support them and celebrate their accomplishments with them and for them. We certainly hear plenty about the things that aren't going well, as we could sometimes be doing better with many things. My belief is there are many more things happening that are good on a regular basis. We just don't hear about them because I think they may be expected outcomes. But if all you hear and see is the bad, then you tend to think it is all bad. There was a campaign several years ago, started, if memory serves me, by parents in our community looking to lift the morale and change the public perception of our schools. It simply stated "I believe." I think it's time to revisit that theme of "I believe." I encourage members of our community that are here today and those that aren't to get involved in our schools, to see what is taking place every day. There's good work in all our classrooms, our learning centers, throughout all of our schools. There are far too many possibilities to mention in these brief remarks, but there are ample opportunities for people to volunteer and be involved in our schools, from simply volunteering to mentoring our children. My challenge and my hope today is for all to get involved in some way with our schools. If you accept my challenge, I know you'll join me in believing. Thank you all for coming today. Now I'll introduce the members-elect of the school committee for some brief comments, starting with Louisa Boatright.
I want to first thank you all for coming. This is great. I've never been to one of these events before. I want to thank my treasurer, which is my mother, for all her special help, my daughter who cannot be here, and then I see many people out there, and I thank you. I just want to also mention that I really look forward, again, my first time on the school committee, but to bring this team together, which is the school committee, the administration, and the teachers, to really provide a quality 21st-century education here in Newport that you can all be proud of. So thank you very much, and we look forward to seeing you helping in the Newport Public Schools. Thank you.
Next, we'll have Becky Bowen come up.
First of all, I want to thank all the voters for having their trust in me once again, and it's a great feeling to know that, you know, that you continue to want me to do this work. And I also am very excited that we have two new members on the school committee. They're very close friends of mine, and I think the new energy is going to really do great things here in Newport. And also, I can't go without thanking my family of my husband of 34 years, who puts up with me being on the phone and writing emails, and my sons who have delayed meals, and all my daughters, and I don't know what I'd do without my six kids to support me in this endeavor. So thank you very much, and we're going to have a great two years.
Next, if we could have Dr. Sandra Flowers come up, say a few words.
I always have to lower the microphone. In addition to thanking family, friends, and the voters of the City of Newport for electing me once again, for my sixth time on the school committee, I'm just going to propose an interesting assignment for everyone here. What is one thing that you learned today? And you'll see in a moment why I'm saying that. I have my commitment to excellence as an educator for over half a century, and also as a public official. I'm really committed to excellence in all of my professional life. We all know the saying how parents and guardians are our children's first teachers, and this should be almost a lifelong commitment on the part of all parents and those who are responsible for our children. With the parents and guardians, educators, members of the school committee, administration, we're focusing on a number of important factors as we are going forward with our One Newport Project. For myself, I have my particular interest in the social and emotional health of all of our young people, from the time they step into our schools, even before then, to the time they leave here. And also, everyone knows what we're doing, getting those youngsters to read proficiently by, on grade level, by grade three, and that is something that all parents, guardians, aunts, uncles, grandparents can be very active in. All of us can be lifelong learners. Some of us never leave school. We spend our whole lives in and around schools. That's something about myself and something about a lot of the people here. So an assignment for each one of us is at the end of the day, when we're sitting down at dinner, watching TV, doing whatever with our families, the little kids, the middle graders, the high school students, college kids who are home from vacation, or just people who are sitting down with one another. What did you learn today? And you'll find out that we are indeed should be lifelong learners. So that's my commitment to you, and again, thank you all very much.
Next up would be Bob Leary.
Thank you, Mr. Gomes. Good afternoon. This, I got the, didn't get the message from Ray and Josh McLaughlin. They told me to wear the Newport tuxedo. I thought it was khaki pants and blue blazer. So they wore a suit, and I wore my Newport tuxedo. So this upcoming year, the Newport School Committee, I will be facing some tremendous challenges and difficult decisions. The finances, overspending its budget by $750,000. Rogers High School, to propose a bond as acceptable to the voters. Spacious, space issues at Pell, short-term and long-term decisions. Contracts for both TAN and Council 94. Test results, as you just saw in the paper and go back years and years, they're not equating to the amount of money we're spending per pupil. And the middle-class exodus from our schools. I know some of you thinking, here goes Leary again, he's going to talk about finances, you know? But no, let me just cover the middle-class exodus in the essence of time. So to set this up for those people who weren't here 50 years ago, Newport went through a lot of changes, and I'll give you a brief history of that. Fifty years ago, 1950s, 1960s, there was over 50,000 sailors in this town and 50 ships. Nobody realized that unless they see the old pictures. Bowen's Wharf was blood alley. You never went down there. It was horrible. Shore Patrol, tattoo polish, pawn shops, places like the Blue Moon on every corner. It was amazing. Newport was very honky-tonk. Then in 1972, Nixon won the presidency. He took the Navy out of Newport. Newport was for sale. Clark Cook House, I'm sure many of you have been there, he bought that for $1. $1. Doris Duke was panicking. She flew down to Washington, DC, and she met with Nixon, and she said she'd do her part, and kudos to her. She'd do her part by buying these old houses and fixing them up under the Newport Restoration Foundation. Nixon said he'd do his part. She was, at the time, the wealthiest woman in the world. He did a part by keeping the war college here, the ODS School, which for those in our military's Office Development School, the OCS School, and other schools stayed in Newport. That, so Newport went from a blue-collar Navy to a white-collar Navy. That was the beginning of a transformation of Newport. Now Newport's for sale again. By the time, but this time is for the wealthy, the rich, and the famous, in what we call dark houses, and you'll see more and more of them all the time. Dark houses are the lights that go off in November and come back on in May. These houses are probably worth $200,000. They're selling for $400,000, they put another $400,000 in them. So to steel a line from Apollo 13, Houston, we have a problem. The middle class has left Newport, and the school system shows it. In my opinion, the middle class is a backbone of a school system. Our schools in Newport are required to welcome all that come through the doors and provide them with a quality education, and that's exactly how it should be. But a strong public school system is essential to any city. The Newport School Committee and the Newport City Council are facing a serious dilemma besides finances, and that is the flight of the middle class. That being said, it's not the time to talk about finances or difficult decisions. It's time to thank the voters. So thank you, voters, and always remember one thing, this is your seat up here, not ours, and not mine. At this time, I would be remiss if I did not take the opportunity to personally congratulate all the city council members and all the school committee members here who are sworn in this afternoon. I will end with a quote from President John Kennedy. "As we express our gratitude, we must never forget, our highest appreciation is not to utter words, but to live by them." So with that quote, I will stand up for what's right, and I will fight for what's wrong. And I promise that I live by these words. Thank you.
Next up would be another new school committee member-elect, and elected also to serve as the vice chair-elect, would be Idan Neary.
Good morning, good afternoon. I think it's afternoon now. First time here, I didn't know there was a speech to be giving. So I want to, mostly I want to thank the voters who sent me here, and I think the message that I gave resonated, which is essentially that I believe in the Newport Public Schools, as Mr. Gomes said, and I believe that all of our children can succeed, and we can help them reach their potential, whatever that potential is for each child. So thank you for believing in the message. Thank you for believing that this is a community project, because they are our schools, and they are our children, and we are one community. So this is a community project. So please come into the schools. We have a lot of talent in Newport. Please come into the schools and help. I want to thank my husband and my children now and for the future, and the past. And I want to finish by telling you very quickly what I think the job of a Newport School Committee is, and many of my colleagues have mentioned it, but I really believe that our job is to work on finding what the needs are of our students and our children and setting educational policies that will set them up for the future. That is what we are meant to do, that is what we are supposed to do. And again, because these are our schools and our children, I ask for your help, and you will know that the decisions that I make as a member of the school committee will always be made because my constituents are the children of Newport. You voted for me on their behalf, but my constituents are the children of Newport, and they will continue to be all of the children of Newport. So thank you very much for your support in the past and in the future, and I look forward to working with the team on the Newport School Committee, with the team in the city council, and with all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Idan. And finally, we'll have school committee member Kathleen Sylvia.
I would like to take this opportunity to thank my family and friends for their support, specifically my son Todd and his wife Deena, my daughter Kristen, who's in Florida right now in the warmth, my grandchildren Sarah, Emily, Connor, and Caroline, I thought I saw her, and my sisters Joan and Barbara. And most importantly, I want to thank the voters of Newport for having faith in me by electing me to a third term. I promise I'll continue to work hard in addressing the many challenges facing us, including but not limited to, excuse me, excuse me, having our children read on grade level by third grade, increasing our students' test scores, reducing truancy, and dealing with our facility needs, finding a home for our pre-K students, the overcrowding at the Pell Elementary School and the failing Rogers High School building. And while we do face challenges, please know that good things are also happening in the Newport Schools. Our children are being provided many opportunities and pathways for their future success, thanks to the school administration, our teachers, and our community, and with our community, specifically One Newport. Now, I just want to say that I'm wearing today, wearing red today in honor of my mentor, Joeva Gaines, who encouraged me in 2004 to run for this office, and I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize her, I see her over there, for her almost 19 years of service on the school committee. But Joeva is not going away. Because of her dedication to the Newport Schools and the public school, public school education, she will continue to serve on several of our subcommittees and the Rhode Island Board of Education. Thank you, Joeva. And thank you to the voters of Newport.
My final challenge today is a plug for the Viking Tree Company that's down at Iris today and tomorrow selling Christmas trees and wreaths for the holiday season, so stop by if you haven't gotten your tree or wreath yet and support the Rogers Boosters. Thank you all for coming.
Will the members of the city council please present their credentials to the city clerk? Please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
...and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations...
And of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations.
...and I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...the duties as a member of the city council.
The duties as a member of the city council.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to declare the council to be in session. The first item on the agenda is the election of a chairman who shall have the title of mayor. Nominations are now in order.
Madam Chair, I make the nomination of Jamie Bova to be the chair of the council.
I second that nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
I move to close the nomination. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. That one ballot has been cast for Jamie Bova as chair of this council, and I'd like to announce that Jamie Bova has legally been elected chair of the council for the 2018-2020 term. At this time, Judge Hastings will administer the nomination.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear...
I solemnly swear.
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
...and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations...
And of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations.
...and I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
...the duties of chairman of the council.
The duties of chairman of the council.
Congratulations. Thank you. At this time, I would like to call for nominations for vice chair. At this time, I would like to call for nominations for vice-chair.
I nominate Susan Taylor for vice-chair.
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I move that the nominations be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. At this time, I would like to direct the City Clerk to cast one ballot for Susan Taylor as vice-chair of the council.
Raise your right hand. Please repeat after me. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations
and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations
and I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge
to the best of my ability
to the best of my ability
the duties of vice-chairman of the council
the duties of vice-chair of the council.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
At this time, I would like to ask for nominations for city solicitor.
I nominate Christopher Bean to serve as city solicitor for the 2018-20 term of office.
I second that motion.
Are there any other nominations?
I move to close the nominations.
I second that motion.
At this time, I direct the City Clerk to cast one ballot for Christopher Bean as city solicitor for the 2018-2020 term of office. At this time, I would like to ask the city solicitor to name his appointments of assistant city solicitor.
Madam Chair, members of the council, with your approval, I would appoint Gerard Galvin as the assistant city solicitor for civil litigation and Whitney Anderson as the assistant city solicitor for law enforcement, and I ask your approval of the same.
Madam Chair, I move that the council give approval to the appointments of Gerard Galvin as assistant city solicitor for civil litigation and Whitney Anderson as assistant solicitor for law enforcement.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations
and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations
and I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability
and I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability
the duties of the solicitor's office
the duties of the solicitor's office.
At this time, I would like to call for nominations for probate judge.
I nominate Gregory F. Fader.
I second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
Here, madam Chair, I move the nominations be closed.
I second that.
I call for a vote for Gregory Fader as probate judge for the 2018-2020 term of office. All in favor?
Aye.
And at this time
Just go to the next one.
At this time, I would like to call for nominations for the municipal court judge.
I nominate Jay Russell Jackson.
I second the nomination.
Are there any other nominations?
Here, madam Chair, I move the nominations be closed.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All against? At this time, Judge Hastings will administer the oath of office.
I solemnly swear
I solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations
and of the State of Rhode Island and Providence Plantations
and I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability
and I will faithfully discharge to the best of my ability
Mr. Fader, the duties of probate judge
the duties of probate judge
Mr. Jackson, the duties of municipal court judge
duties of municipal court judge
At this time, I would like to call, introduce Angela Cala to give brief remarks. First Ward Counselor.
I want to thank you guys for all being here. I am grateful for the residents of Newport for honoring me with the privilege to serve on the council. Newport is a constant work in progress filled with some of the most talented and great minds, both famous and unknown. I move with the intention of nurturing connections and exchanging ideas from both Newport residents and its city government. I have met so many wonderful people. I look forward to working with many residents alongside with the council to ensure that Newport remains the international city we all love. And of course, I want to be able to thank my family, my wife, Allison, my son Ezra, and my parents who are here tonight, for sure. Election Day, it was thirteen hours of wet, soggy craziness. So, I thank you, and again, I look forward to meeting each and every one of you.
Next, I would like to introduce Lynn Underwood Segley, Second Ward Counselor for the City of Newport.
Good afternoon. I'd like to thank family and friends for being here today. Thank you Judge Hastings, Father O'Laughlin, Reverend Richards, and the Newport Artillery Company for joining us today as well. Congratulations to my fellow City Council and school committee members, to the voters of Newport Second Ward. I am humbled by your faith in me once again, and I will work every day to be responsive and accessible. I'd like to take this time to thank a couple of people. First of all, I'd like to thank John Flores and Marco Camacho for serving on the last council. Marco's work on the Newport Prevention Coalition, raising awareness in the fight against substance abuse, as well as work with Discover Newport and the Aquidnic Island Planning Commission are great assets for the city. I'd like to thank Joeva Gaines, who I'm going to miss dearly at our meetings, for her years of dedicated service to the students of the Newport Public Schools. It has been an honor and a pleasure, serving as vice-chair with Mayor Harry Winthrop for the past two years. Whether planting the millionth daffodil or addressing an international audience from Kinsale, Ireland to Shimoda, Japan, Harry is the quintessential ambassador for Newport. It was never easy stepping into Harry's shoes at speaking events. We all owe Harry a debt of gratitude for representing the great city of Newport, full of pride and grace, and I will miss his vast experience and steadiness. Newport is experiencing a great amount of growth for both full-time residents and as an international tourist destination. Thank you to the work of the city staff, led by City Manager Joe Nicholson, who for the past four years has laser-focused on the expanded economy, prioritizing year-round jobs and important projects such as the Sheffield Innovation Newport Project, the Pell Bridge realignment, the North End Innovation District. This council has a lot of work ahead, and I feel so privileged to serve once again. I am very grateful to my husband Vincent for his unwavering encouragement, and my daughter Mia and son Chase for keeping everything in perspective. Thank you, all of those who helped me with my campaign. I am overwhelmed by your faith in me and the support you have given, and I would not be standing here without you. Thank you very much.
Next is Justin McLaughlin, at-large counselor for the City of Newport.
My wife told me I shouldn't tell this joke, but nobody would understand it. But several years ago, I gave this talk, and then Harry Winthrop got up and thanked me for giving his inaugural address. So, I'm going to keep my remarks a little bit briefer today, and I'm going to leave it to Jamie to give that address. There's one person I have to thank above all others, because if it wasn't for Chris, who gave me permission to run, I wouldn't be here today. Just remember who's in charge in our family, and I don't forget. But I also want to thank David, my son, and my daughter Frances. They're part of my life and they make it possible for me to do this. I want to thank my other friends and supporters, the people who contributed to my campaign, the people who voted for me, the people who give me advice. And I reach back over time. Some of those people are here, some of them are not. You know, Mark Coburn was somebody who was terribly important to my understanding, the process in Newport, and unfortunately, he died many years ago. But I spoke with his wife just recently, reminding me of the contributions that are made by many, many people to the role of being a member of the City Council. As I said on the radio during the campaign, I was humbled by the fact that I've met thousands of people in Newport, and yet there are thousands and thousands of people in Newport I have never met. There are streets in Newport that I regret I may only see once every two years when I'm running. I have to remember that every day. I have to make decisions for people that I don't have the opportunity to speak with regularly, who I may never have spoken with, but who are relying on me and my fellow colleagues in the City Council to make decisions that are good for Newport and good for our future. So, I commit to working with the City Council. I think it's going to be an exciting two years. I thank them. I thank the members of the school committee for running. I acknowledge Marco, who's in the audience today, is somebody I served with for four years. I encourage people to run in the future. It's an important thing to do, to serve in government, and I look forward to serving you over the next two years. Thank you very much.
Next up is Jean Marie Napolitano, at-large City Counselor for the City of Newport.
Good afternoon. I first and foremost would like to thank my family and friends that have supported me over the years. And to the voters of Newport, I was overwhelmed with the outpouring of support and very grateful. And thirdly, I'd like to thank administration and all the city employees for their assistance and dedication in making Newport a great place to live, work, and visit. I'd also like to congratulate all that had the courage to run, those elected and those not elected, because it does take courage. And I look forward to working with all in the future.
Next is Susan Taylor, at-large City Counselor and Vice Chair for the City of Newport.
Welcome to all of you. I am so glad to see you all here, and I do want to thank the people who have particularly worked hard to make sure that I would get elected. It's such an honor. I see my friends, my extended family, and I have to mention my dear husband, my mainstay, Rick Best. I don't get much chance to give him a shout-out, and he deserves it. In reality, I want to say that it is you who are welcoming us, your new council and your new school committee. You have chosen us to serve on the council, and I am really, really honored to have been selected from among a pool of such talented and dedicated people who are offering their service, and I am looking at my colleague Marco. I also want to echo what Jean said. We are blessed with a city staff who I believe are outstanding. They work very hard for the best outcomes in Newport, and I see that they are there, ready to support our efforts as we move forward. I'm especially humbled to be elected to this position twice now, because I'm an immigrant to Newport. I first visited thirty-two years ago this week and experienced all the magic of the holiday season in this city. And knowing that, I'm especially honored that you are out here today rather than working on your doorways for the doorway Christmas contest. I do bring the qualities that immigrants traditionally bring, which is a love for the new community we have chosen. Our energy, our entrepreneurial spirit, our gratitude to the place that has accepted us, and a deep desire to assimilate, both to contribute what we bring and to be accepted as a part of that community. So thank you for the honor and the privilege to serve. And now, it's time to roll our sleeves up. We have to get to work, for we have big issues on Newport's plate in the next two years. We have work to do on our schools, our two bodies together. We have an opportunity to transform Newport with the Pell Bridge rampery design. I know we are all, we and you, dedicated to the good of Newport and Newporters. So it's our privilege and duty to, as councilors, to work together so that the council leads on the issues before us and to share our discussions with you, the residents. I have to say, as an immigration lawyer, I spent more than half my career wishing Congress would enact some sensible solutions, while at the same time, I was watching our country move toward a chasm in our national politics greater than any I've known in my lifetime. And that's why I'm honored to work on the council. Our job is to address the issues that come before us as a city. The beauty is that we all want our kids to be educated well and to graduate with a sense of optimism about their own future. We all want to enjoy open space together, and we all want to share bountiful feasts with our family and friends, with our community. We have the opportunity to transcend the divisiveness we see elsewhere. We have much to do in the next two years. I salute my colleagues, and I look forward to working together. And to those of you in the audience, please stay engaged. We can't do it without you.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you all for coming. I would like to thank my colleagues on the City Council and the school committee for serving, and all of the dedicated people who chose to run and dedicate their time to the city on a regular basis. And I would like to thank my family and my boyfriend, my friends. I know that I would not be able to do this without you and all the support that you give me. As I began to look ahead to the new term, I decided to write a letter to my colleagues to express myself and how I hoped we could embark on the new term together. And I'm going to read that letter today. Dear colleagues, as we embark on this new term as a City Council, I am writing this letter to thank you for your dedication to our city. As colleagues, we share the common bond to serve, and I look forward to working with you all to carry Newport forward. We all want Newport to be a successful and prosperous city. The people of Newport have placed their trust in you and I, and our success in leading this city is their success. This is a unique time for Newport. We are presented with many opportunities to transform our future. Our city has been developing, and we are embarking on new projects that will shape the city for the next century. It is my hope and belief that we can work together as a council, not only to tackle these immense challenges, but to be effective in the everyday for all Newporters. We have the opportunity to transform Newport for the better, but we can only succeed if we keep a clear focus and work towards that goal. Working together as a group is not without challenges. We are all human, we will have different views as we move forward. Differences of opinion and informed debate are important on the council. It is important that you are empowered to raise your concerns. We must address these differences with civility, integrity, and a commitment to doing what is best for Newport. We must ensure that we are open and clear in our deliberations and debates. Transparency invites criticism, and I believe we should welcome that criticism to grow as public servants and civic leaders. The people of Newport have placed their trust in us, and it is our duty to hear them. I am honored to serve the people of Newport with such dedicated and capable people, like you, all of our colleagues, the public servants, and the dedicated administration and staff that serve our city by the sea. I look forward to your contributions to the deliberations and debates that lie ahead. Please know that even if we find ourselves on different sides of an issue, I understand and know that you and I are working towards the same goal, to serve the people of Newport. and know that you and I are working towards the same goal, to serve the people of Newport. I value your perspective, insight, and honesty, and I am grateful for them as we chart the course for the city.
At this time, I would like to call for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
I second that motion.
All in favor? And I would like to call upon Father Frank O'Laughlin to give the benediction.
Let us pray for God's amazing grace. Almighty and eternal God, you have revealed your glory to all the nations. God of power and might, wisdom and justice, through your authority is rightly administered, laws are enacted, and judgments are decreed. We pray for these men and women, city council and school committee members. We pray that you will fill them with wisdom, with honesty, with integrity, and with courage. Bless their ability to serve well, as they are entrusted to guard our political welfare. We pray for all citizens of this great city, the city by the sea, Newport. We pray to you, who is Lord in God, forever and ever.
I would like to welcome Jimmy Winters to sing "God Bless America."
God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the perrys, to the ocean, white reform. God bless America, my home, sweet home. God bless America, my home, sweet home. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with the light from above. From the mountains to the perrys, to the ocean, white reform. God bless America, my home, sweet home.
Well, thank you all for coming today. That concludes the ceremony, and we invite you to enjoy refreshments out in the lobby area provided by Your Kitchen Companion Catering.